Number 10, 2006 to order. Will you please stand to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll. Councilmember Barnwell?
Here.
Falcone?
Here.
House?
Here.
Schneider?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Mayor Bloom? Here. Will you please read item number one and you're going to get to go first.
Proclamation declaring October 12, 2006 as lights on after-school day.
Okay, and we've had, we have four proclamations this week. It's just a busy time of the year, so I decided maybe the council member here, let me turn that on, who has worked so hard on the after-school programs and so on and use, should be the one to read this, so Roger Horton.
Am I, yes, am I? Good. So, I think there's a number of people, Terry Brown, Robin, Brian, Laura, Kevin, Burrell, and Brooke, are you all here? If so, could you all come up? So I'm going to proceed with this wonderful proclamation for Lights On After School. Whereas Lights On After School promotes the critical importance of quality after-school programs in the lives of children, their families and their communities at a time in our nation when more than 28 million children have parents who work outside the home and 14.3 million children have nowhere to go after school. And the citizens of Santa Barbara stand firmly committed to quality after-school programs and opportunities because they provide safe, challenging, engaging, and fun learning experiences to help children and youth develop their social, emotional, physical, cultural, and academic skills. And quality after-school programs also support working families by ensuring their children are safe and productive after the regular school day ends. And these programs are opportunities to engage families, schools, and diverse community partners in advancing the welfare of our children. And quality after-school programs build stronger communities by involving our students, parents, business leaders, and adult volunteers in the lives of our young people, thus promoting positive relationships among children, youth, families, and adults. And Parks and Recreation and Santa Barbara City Schools have provided significant leadership in the area of community involvement in the education and well-being of our youth and are grounded in the principle that quality after-school programs are key to helping our children become successful adults. And when many after-school programs across the country are facing funding shortfall so severe that they're being forced to close their doors and turn off their lights, Santa Barbara is opening ours. So for Mayor Bloom, by virtue of the authority vested in us by the city of Santa Barbara, California, we do hereby proclaim October 12, 2006 as Lights On After School Day and enthusiastically encourage our community members to support innovative after-school programs and activities that ensure that lights stay on and the doors stay open for all children after school.
If we could have you, there, he's going to hand that to you.
Can I have this?
There.
Thank you, thank you very much. Sure. Hi, thank you, Councilman Horton and other council members as well as Mayor Bloom. My name's Terry Brown, the Youth Activities Coordinator, and I've got a lot of staff here as well as some partners who help us with our after-school programs I'd like to introduce. I'd first just like to say that through Youth Activities, we offer 14 after-school programs, 10 elementary and four junior high, and we're currently serving about 1,300 children every day after school. So without the help of our partners, Santa Barbara City Schools and Arts Alive, Laura Inks who's here, Brian Kerr from Powell, Alex Altavilla who I know, each of them may want to say a few words, this huge project offering after-school programs would not be possible. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Laura?
Hi, I'm Laura Inks with Arts Alive. I just want to say on behalf of all the children that I work with on, from all socioeconomic groups of our city, that I really appreciate and they appreciate your support in all you do for children and the arts in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? No. Okay.
I'm Robin Sowaski, the Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Education for the Santa Barbara School Districts, and your proclamation pretty much said it all, how important the after-school programs are. We really appreciate the collaboration, and you'll be happy to know we're working on the new grant funding Prop 49. We've already been meeting with Sarah and Terry and the team and collaborators, and we will be submitting our new grant for funding, hopefully to even extend and enrich the programs we have.
That's great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name is Brian Kerr, I'm with the Police Activities League, and I just want to thank the city. They've been a big supporter of us as a reciprocal, and we'd just like to thank all the support that the city has given us both in-kind in the form of staffing and facilities. We couldn't, we couldn't hold our programs without it, so we really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do you want to read number two?
Item two, proclamation declaring October 15, 2006 as white cane safety day.
I'm really lazy today, we're letting Grand House do this one.
Hello, Adelaide Ortega, hello. Adelaide's the president of the Santa Barbara South Coast Chapter of the National Federation of the Blind, and you're here today to receive your proclamation. White cane safety day, October 15, 2006. The white cane which every blind citizen has the right to carry demonstrates and symbolizes the user's ability to achieve a full and independent life and to show the capacity to work productively in competitive employment. And every person should be aware that the law requires motorists to exercise appropriate caution when approaching a blind person carrying a white cane or using a guide dog, like the guide dog that's sitting right here next to us, huh? Julie May? Hi, Julie May.
That's wonderful.
State law also calls upon employers in both the public and private sectors to use the employment skills of our blind citizens by recognizing their worth as individuals and rewarding their capabilities. And the city of Santa Barbara with the cooperation, cooperative assistance of the Santa Barbara South Coast Chapter, National Federation of the Blind of California, looks forward to a continued expansion of employment opportunities for and greater acceptance of blind persons in the competitive labor market. The mayor of the city of Santa Barbara, California proclaims October 15, 2006 as white cane safety day and calls upon our schools to offer full employment, full opportunities for training blind persons, our employers to use the skills of competent blind persons by offering new opportunities for the blind, and all members of our community to recognize the white cane as an instrument of safety and self-help for blind pedestrians everywhere. And Adelaide, it's really nice to have you here to receive this proclamation.
Thank you very much, and I would like to say thank you for really being there for us a lot and putting the lights up that really help a lot on Mission and Delavina. That really is a great thing, it's very helpful. And I would also like to thank you on behalf of everybody at the Braille Institute, they all say thank you very much for all the help that you have done for them too. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and thanks to your dog too.
Proclamation declaring week of October 9 to 15, 2006 as Harbor and Seafood Festival Week.
Okay. Brian, Barnwell is our liaison to the Harbor Commission. I hope that's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, we have a big week coming up, a big weekend, this weekend, Harbor and Seafood Festival, so we have a proclamation. Whereas the Santa Barbara Channel offers a rich maritime history and Santa Barbara Harbor is home to many ocean-related businesses and activities, including commercial fishing, and whereas an annual free-admission festival acknowledging Santa Barbara Harbor's contribution to the community has become an honored tradition, and whereas the festival will feature, make note, an Albacore barbecue, crab and lobster boil, marine exhibits, marine information booths, live music, arts and crafts, raffles, children's activities, free boat rides, tours of a NOAA Research Festival and the U.S. Coast Guard vessel, seafood cooking demonstrations, and a day-long fisherman's market. And whereas participation by the Santa Barbara Maritime Museum will include a marine touch tank, museum tours, maritime films, a treasure map activity, all 12-year-olds pay attention, maritime crafts, and historic fishing demonstrations. Now therefore, I, Brian Barnwell, acting on behalf of our esteemed mayor Marty Bloom, by virtue of the authority vested in us from the city of Santa Barbara, do hereby proclaim October 9 through the 15th as Harbor Seafood Festival Week, and invite everybody in the city to come down and enjoy the festivities. There you go. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and Council. I'm Bob Yost, I'm with the Page Youth Center, we're the lucky beneficiaries of this event. We make a little bit of money on it. Hearing great company today with the kids, I was thinking as you were talking about the kids at the schools keeping the lights on, we're almost into basketball season which services about 800 kids that practice at some of those sites. We're going to be out there Saturday keeping the lights on for all the kids at the Page Youth Center. We service about 3,000 kids through the year in various sundry programs. For your information, we're a South Coast County-based organization, we're not in the city, we're in the county, but about 25% of our participants are from the city of Santa Barbara, so we cover the whole geographic area. We also get kids from San Ynez and Carpinteria and all over. So it's very well, we've been partnering now for the last five years, whoa, with the harbor and doing this. Mick and his crew do an outstanding job, I'd like to compliment them on what they do for us. Like I say, it's a great event, it's one of the events, I know I say this every year, I have no problem getting volunteers for it, which is always a good test that it is a good event. We'd love you to come down, try some of the fresh seafood, take a shot at our basketball court, paint some fish, paint some kelp, do some of those fun things. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Mick?
Thank you.
Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, I really have not much to add between Councilmember Barnwell's excellent presentation of that proclamation and what my colleague Bob Yost had to say, we just welcome all the families to come on down to this wonderful event this weekend. It truly is harvest time down there, and it's a wonderful time to celebrate not only, excuse me, the products of our sustainable fisheries, but our organizations, agencies, and businesses who work to make the harbor such a wonderful place. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's this Saturday from 10 to 5. Usually get a good lunch down there. Go ahead, number four.
Proclamation declaring October 2006 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Okay, Councilwoman Schneider.
Okay, I think we have Susan Cain here, and talking about silent witnesses, come on up, a little more serious, yeah, a little more serious here. My pleasure to be reading this. So Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2006. The lives of women, men, and children, extended families and communities continue to be negatively and often severely impacted by domestic violence. And the crime of domestic violence is not confined to any group or groups of people but crosses all economic, racial, and social segments of our society. Men and women alike must recognize the scope of the societal problem and work together to create a community which does not tolerate domestic violence. Santa Barbara's human service agencies, including those represented by Domestic Violence Coordinating Council, provide vital services for families impacted by domestic violence and collaboratively plan programs to prevent the intergenerational cycle of violence. And Domestic Violence Solutions of Santa Barbara encourages all Santa Barbara residents to take a stand against domestic violence in their personal relationships and in the community. So on behalf of the mayor, myself, and the rest of the council, we'd like to proclaim October 2006 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urge all residents to be part of the solution of ending domestic violence in our city. Thank you so much for the work that you do here as well. Thank you, thank you everyone. We're honored and humbled that you have supported us in the past, you support us today, and we're confident that you'll support us in the future. The work that we do is critical to stopping the intergenerational cycle of violence. It doesn't matter how big or small the city is, how rich or poor the city is, it touches us all. So thank you then very much. Well-written, perfect, you said it all for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Okay, and thanks to the councilmembers for helping me out. Are there changes to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor, there's one. Item number 14, which is the appeal at 216 East Calle Lorelles, has been withdrawn by the appellant.
Okay, thank you. Public comment, I have one speaker, and that is Ken Locke.
My name is Kenneth Locke. I want to talk about the, kind of the age that we're never going to enter into. I kind of have, kind of doubts, but I have hopes that we enter into another age, the next age. The problem that we have to understand is that in the next age, there's no capitalism. In the next age, we have all integrated mind-body-spirit-soul relationships. Right now, this age is kind of slaves or trapped in a paradigm which is non-integrated in relation to the mind and body. I spoke, I've been speaking about the arts. Art is actually a byproduct of a non-integrated mind-body relationship. Athletics, tennis, somebody who has a non-integrated mind-body relationship will have a relationship in relation to competition. And in this paradigm, there's a connection between competition within the workplace, competition within sports, competition within politics, it's directly related to capitalism. Again, in the next age, which I'm doubting is going to happen, there's no capitalism. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think it's councilmember reports now, assignment reports, Mr. Horton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A few things of interest. We finally opened the restrooms at 914 State Street, which I know previous council, Mayor Bloom was on that, and Mayor Miller, and many others, and this council was finally able to get it done, so we're very happy for that, and I know that downtown organization is as well. I wanted to comment that on Wednesday evening at 6:30, there's going to be a forum on election reform at the Faulkner Gallery, and everyone in the community that's interested in election reform, including finance reform, is invited to be there. We'll do some education on what we've learned in studying this effort, and then we'll be opening the floor to comments from the public, and everyone who's interested, please join us. A very excellent group called Partners in Education met last Friday. It's a group of concerned educators and businesses in the community, and they support the school system in many different ways, and the emphasis this time was computers in their homes. And that has done a lot to get computer facility out there. And then finally, I think most of us were at the Community Environmental Council Annual Dinner where the Borgatello family was honored this time for their wonderful work with the recycling facility, and we all think that was a word well justified. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Falcone?
Thank you. This weekend was incredibly busy. On Saturday, there was, beginning with LAFCO hearing, the local agency formation group that really is the one that's going to oversee what really happens with the unincorporated area that exists between the city of Santa Barbara and the city of Goleta. They were given, the board was given a fairly extensive explanation of their charge and what's being asked of them and what the issues really are before them. And then there was a great deal of public testimony. The next meeting will probably be held in February, as there are some members of the board that may change, and it is only appropriate that the new members do the actual decision-making. So we look forward to hearing more about that in February. Then, over to the Valley where our former colleague Rusty Fairley's beautiful, wonderful wife, Linda Fairley, celebrated her retirement from 35 years or 33 years of service to City College Adult Education, and she did a beautiful job over there. Most of the people in the room stood up when they asked for who has attended City College Adult Education classes, and it's a great resource. We'll miss Linda, but she's got someone great coming in after that. Then I had the honor of welcoming home the 425th Civilian Air Battalion who had just served 11 and 1/2 months in Iraq. So they are all home safely, and I was able to give them a little welcome home, and they had a party for their friends and family, although they got home about three months ago. This was the celebration. And then finally, the honoring of the Borgatellos at CEC and a more heartfelt, warm family. We're so lucky to have them as entrepreneurs in this community, they've done so much, they are state leaders in recycling, and we owe a great debt to them for all that they've done. And last, yesterday was, or Sunday, Sunday was the ACLU Garden Party, and I felt that it was really a very important meeting for the group because they talked about something, a new direction for the ACLU in terms of a program, and one of the things that they're really focusing on is the rights of the disabled and the disabled community that's not only physically disabled, mentally disabled, but also disabled in ways of sight and hearing and the whole gamut. So I think that it's an area that may have been overlooked to a great extent in the past and is now being brought much more to the fore, and I am very pleased to see that they're doing that as a former chair of that local agency, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. House.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, well, hearty agreement with the comments about the Borgatellos and about that event, and thank goodness for them opening that restroom, a lot of us have waited for a long time. And, so, but I, one of the things I did learn there, talking to John Shufin, who's overseeing that project there, the, its design is such that it's, it's not unique necessarily to that exact location, the actual interior dimensions and the way that it's been designed, it could be, could be put in other places if we found an opportunity. So there, there may be other places we could look for in the future. The, on Saturday morning was a walking tour of what some are calling uptown, the Upper State Street area, and well-attended, I might add, it was really something to spend that part of my morning walking up and down State Street, and with the assistance of MTD, Sherry Fisher and David Damiano were there, and they'd arranged for the buses to shuttle us between different stops as well. And I think for some, it was honestly a chance to get in the bus for the first time, and it was a really, really good mix of walking and looking, and I really want to thank our staff for the guiding that they did, they wore those bright red t-shirts, and they were at different points, and helped us look and see what there was to see from each of the different points. So that's just the beginning. I believe there are two other dates for workshops that are going to be coming up, the, oh boy, I better say this right, the 19th is one in the evening, and there's one, I believe, on the 14th as well. So on the 19th, it's 5:30 in the evening at Hope School, and prior to that, there will be one on the 14th, and I'm-
It's in the morning.
It's in the morning on the 14th, and-
At Hope School.
At Hope School as well, okay. And so that's just a notice to the public and encourage them to come out either on the 14th in the morning at Hope School or in the evening at Hope School on the 19th. And just another opportunity to participate in planning for the future of that part of Santa Barbara, and I'm glad we're taking a step back really just to look at that. Anyway, thank you very much.
Okay, Ms. Schneider.
Thank you. Speaking of Hope School, last Wednesday morning, I got to go to be part of the International Walk to School Day, and that was at Hope School, I think also Councilmember House and the mayor was part of that at other schools. And they had more people this year participate than in the past, so they were very excited about that, and raffles and so forth to give out, so that was fun to be a part of that. The, I, this morning at the MTD Board Meeting, just to let people know in relation to the enhanced transit, you can't have enhanced transit without the buses, right? So they've been due to some pushing on our part, I think, if we were looking at July 1 of next year to start this, we wanted to move it up to January 1st. They found an arrangement up in Santa Clara, and they're just about to sign all the pieces of the, on the dotted line of bringing eight buses down here from Santa Clara so that they can retrofit them in time to have the enhanced transit start as of January 1st. So that's happening on their end, and I was very excited to hear that this morning. Last Friday evening was the EDC, Environmental Defense Center, thank goodness it's Friday Fall Feast, it's their last one of the season, packed with, you know, great food and fun and people, and it's always a fun event to attend. And the, last week, and then on the flip side, the mayor and I attended, we were up in San Francisco last week, the mayor's office, Mayor Gavin Newsom's office hosts what's called a Project Homeless Connect, and they do that every eight weeks. And it's just an amazing sight to behold, and it's something I think if we could even take 10% of what they do there here, what a difference it would make. What it is, is they rent out the Civic Auditorium right there at the Civic Center, they actually don't rent it out, it's a city facility, and it's a one-stop place for all sorts of services to give to homeless people and the poor, mostly homeless, and mostly homeless people who have fallen through the cracks, who are not part of any governmental system, and to get them in the system, to get them the services that they're entitled to. There was everything from flu shots to TB testing to lens crafters was there giving free eye exams and free eyeglasses. There was doggy daycare in front for people who had pets with them, and there was a vet on hand that looked at all, and there were, I think, 17 dogs and 11 cats, we heard, at the end of that. Sprint was there, offering free long-distance phone calls to anyone who wanted to call loved ones. FedEx was there, allowing people to make creative packages and cards that they would then send out. All the different social service agencies, the VA, food stamps, disability, SSI, were there to help people get appointments. The DMV was there to take pictures for people who needed California IDs, there was a used books that they could take, there was a food area where people walked in and were served food as opposed to going through a line for, like a cafeteria. There was needle exchange programs, there was dentistry there, I mean, it was just everything you could possibly imagine someone would need. There was a place where you could get your wheelchair fixed, about 20 wheelchairs were repaired, as well as a rolling suitcase that people use where all their belongings were in that. And this one day, there were, we got the final numbers, and I'm writing, I'll be writing a report, and actually on Thursday morning at 10:30 at the South Coast Homeless Advisory Committee, I'll be giving a more detailed report, and anyone's welcome to come to that at 6:30 Garden Street. But that one day, there were, over 1,900 people were served that day. They had volunteers go out into the Tenderloin and other area to bring people to the Civic Auditorium. There were 1,400 volunteers, and everyone had a one-on-one assistance while they were there. And I think 180 people were housed that night. All the shelters were there, and they had a reservation system, and it was just incredible. And like I said, if we could do 10% of that, it was amazing. The other pieces, because they do this every eight weeks, the cumulative effect of that, the more and more people want to become involved, the only thing the city pays for is they host the venue because it's their own property. There are t-shirts that the volunteers wear, that they're looking for sponsorship for that actually. The DMV $6 fee for the ID, and some emergency SRO-type of stabilization unit, so maybe a total of $10,000 to $15,000 for the city of San Francisco. Everything else is in-kind donation or sponsored by corporations, and it was just so heartwarming and to see actual good work get done. The mayor was there, he was there for over an hour, and other, there are other people from Anchorage and Phoenix and Detroit, and places in Santa Monica and in Marin County who are watching this because we're trying to, there's a push to push this out nationwide. So just an incredible day, and I'll have a report out, I'll make sure to send it out to everyone. Thank you.
I reported on it just real briefly at the ACLU Garden Party because this national board member was talking about disabled rights, and here was homeless disabled people that were really getting services, and if they needed eyeglasses, they walked out with them or they rolled out with them in their wheelchairs, and it was just, it was incredible, it showed a great deal of dignity for the homeless people, and I hope we can do that here. Mr. Williams?
So in addition to, I guess, most of those events, which I went to, I'll mention a couple of ones that haven't. One was on Friday morning, members of the community were introduced to a new brand school professor at one of their breakfasts, an expert on water and water markets. The, in addition to that, in addition to the slew of other things we were at on Saturday, including LAFCO, which was really amazing to see the Committee for One and mobile home dwellers really stand up at the same time when they were, when there was a straw poll, which was, you know, as we have seen, a minor miracle that there's been, essentially that problem solved, where both parties can meet that interest. Now, the one outstanding issue, of course, is how do we rectify our general plan amendment with Goleta's? So that, that's the one real outstanding issue in that matter. And then also on Saturday was the Back to the Bayou Annual Event for the Rescue Mission, which for those of you that don't know is a very successful live-in substance abuse program that also has a homeless shelter. program that also has a homeless shelter down on Ollie Street. And they have just truly amazing success at helping people meet the challenges of beating alcohol and drug abuse problems. And on Monday, and a mayor and I participated in another Yes on Proposition 87 press conference, which, in which we examined a couple of things. Number one is the need for alternative fuel distribution systems in California and Santa Barbara, because I, I think we know that Santa Barbaraans and Californians are pretty aware people and will buy less polluting fuels if they're available, and that's one of the effects. And then, of course, one of the, one of the others that's important is if we can truly reduce the amount of fossil fuels that we're, that we're using, we have the potential to reduce the cost of gasoline at the same time by reducing demand on that. So a couple important things about Proposition 87 plus a neat, you know, remote presentation by Al Gore, and to cap off a very, very, very busy week.
Yeah. Mr. Barnwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was in a hammock all week, eating peeled grapes.
Really?
No, I'm kidding. Actually, we don't want to reduce the cost of gasoline, we want to raise the cost of gasoline. That's where you begin to get social change. I wanted to put a footnote to the State Street tour, which Mr. House mentioned, which was outstanding, and I think some kudos and applause need to go to our Community Development Department, Paul Casey and the city planner, Ms. Weesom, the entire staff. It was really well done. And I want to make an announcement, which each of us make on a regular basis, but it doesn't seem to have sunk in. I walked the entire route, and there was one point at which we took the MTD bus and Mr. Damiano was on it. We had about 20 or 25 people on the bus as we were looking out, and I asked how many of those people knew that if they worked downtown, they could get a free bus pass. Now, one single person knew that. And this was a savvy crowd, as you all know, we had a lot of smart people on that tour. So I don't know how we get the word out, but everyone liked the bus, and many people said they'd never been on a bus, and here they were taking it back to the church for the beginning of the tour. So, you know, it just pointed out to me there's got some serious disconnect going on there. But for anybody who works downtown, downtown city of Santa Barbara, you can get a free bus pass and every ride on the bus is free. And we're not, I don't, I'm not necessarily asking people to ride five days a week, but if everybody just rode one day or two days, just imagine the change it would make. I did walk to school, I was part of the walk to school.
And Brian, they can, they can get that at the parking office.
At the new downtown park, thank you, Mr. Williams. They get it at the new downtown parking office, which is in the new Granada Garage, which has that new wonderful street going down in front of it, which has all of those turnbays to let you go in and get out again. It really looks great. Many thanks to the Public Works Department for that. I wanted to talk about the walk to school. I walked to school for Peabody and also for Adams. And I don't know how we solve this problem, we tried it for many, many years, but it was sad to me that Adams School did not participate in the walk to school program because of where they are and the difficulties associated with walking there. And I think we should probably bring that closer to the front of our list and see how can we improve that environment there for kids to be able to walk to school, because it also ties into the transportation issue and use of cars. You have one mom dropping off one kid, how can we, how can we fix that? And I also wanted to mention one last thing, which is the, we're going to lose Lynn Rodriguez on the school board. And I don't know if you know this, but she's going to devote her time to Harding School and try and spend some time there to create a renaissance at that school. So I have personally pledged to help her in any way I can, because that's a neighborhood school that has nothing but potential when it comes to expanding as a neighborhood school. So those were some of the things I did, as well as all the other illustrious things that we each did last week. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
It's good to know that about Harding, I used to teach there, and I love that school. I have two things that nobody mentioned, totally amazing, but boy, did we have a busy weekend. I had seven events on Saturday, as well as everything else. But there was a disaster preparedness, I guess it was an adult ed lecture, and I connected finally in my brain the homeless connect that we had seen up in San Francisco with disaster preparedness, which makes a lot of sense, because you've got all the services in one place, they're used to coming there every other month. If a disaster should happen, they're just going to show up there, and they're going to be able to give all kinds of services to everybody, not just homeless. So that's one of the fallout good things that happens from that, so, yeah. And then we had, we were very, well, for us to be selected for this was amazing, for the Peony Pavilion, which is a Chinese opera, to come here, it's nine hours long, and thank goodness they separated in three days. It was just truly amazing. I'd never seen a Chinese opera, and it's just truly amazing. And for little Santa Barbara to get that, it had only been shown in big venues. So we had a little tiny venue at the Barrow Theater, and it was just truly amazing, the costuming and everything. And there was a dinner Sunday night at the Montecito Country Club. But I think we're going to see more of that kind of thing from China, because the council general was there and all kinds of people, and I, I think it's really wonderful. And then, fast forward to Jimmy's, which is a restaurant that just closed, that is where our Chinese used to be, I mean, that was a big Chinatown. And so somehow we ought to connect Henry Yang, who was speaking Chinese that night, with Jimmy's. Anyway, put that, I'll put that in your heads. Okay, yeah, yeah, it is an also. Okay, so enough, I think we skipped a few things, but it was an amazing weekend, probably why we have a short agenda. You know, yeah, we did it all. Consent calendar, I think Mr. Horton has something. Is it number eight?
I'm not sure it has to be read, but I would like to pull eight.
Okay.
Number 12 also.
Eight and 12, okay, anything else? Okay, go ahead and read your five and six, or what is it, six and seven.
Item six, adoption of ordinance for consent to sublease and non-disturbance agreement between City of Santa Barbara, Amper Sand Aviation LLC, and Federal Express Corporation at the airport, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the council of the City of Santa Barbara approving a consent to sublease and non-disturbance agreement dated November 9, 2006, between the City of Santa Barbara, Amper Sand Aviation LLC, and Federal Express Corporation for an air and ground small package shipping facility at the Santa Barbara Municipal Airport. Item seven, acceptance of federal highway administration grant, including recommendation A that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the council of the City of Santa Barbara to approve and authorize the Public Works Director to execute program supplement agreement number 015M, and to administer the local agency state agreement for federal aid project number BPMPL 5007040.
Okay, that was reading by title only, without objection, we'll wait for their reading. Item number eight, you want to go ahead and read the title of that?
Approval of standardization of Motorola MCC 5500 radio console and components for city use.
Okay, Mr. Horton.
One of the many tragedies of 9/11 was the fact that the services couldn't talk to each other. And it's been a continuing concern of mine ever since, having been on council almost directly after that happened. And I'm just really interested in knowing, let's say we had a situation where we had the Forest Service, the sheriff, the CHP, and maybe even a military or guardian, it all involved in some sort of a local disaster. How would we handle the situation so that we wouldn't have another circumstance as happened at 9/11?
Mr. Grimes?
Madam Mayor, council members, Councilmember Horton, my name is Mike Grimes. I'm the Public Works Facilities Manager, and sitting next to me is Lieutenant Gil Torres, he's the manager of the 9/11 Operations Center. The, the new system that we're buying does not help or hinder our ability to respond to mutual aid events. In the state of California, there are two frequencies assigned for mutual aid. One is assigned specifically to law enforcement, and the other is assigned specifically to the fire department. All of the portable and mobile radios that we have in our city are programmed for those two frequencies, and when our officers or fire units respond to any other agency, they simply get on that specific channel, and then they are, they are able to communicate with each other. The California Highway Patrol has a specific frequency assigned to the California Highway Patrol, and we do not have the ability to communicate with them on that frequency. And we also do not have the ability to communicate with the Forest Service Department, although the Forest Service Department has the ability to communicate with the county 9/11 system. And since we and the county have 9/11 systems that cover each other in terms of a failure of one system or the other, if we go down, we switch over to the county. If the county goes down, they switch over to our 9/11 center. So theoretically, the Forest Service, then we are able to communicate with them through the county and 9/11 center. I am, I have absolutely no information on how we communicate with any other of the agencies that you mentioned.
Well, it, it remains a concern of mine, that it's still a problem, and I don't know who's working on it, and I don't know whether the city can do anything, but if they can, I would like us to.
Councilmember Horton, I do know that we are moving from Sims to NIMS, and that is one of the major issues that is being discussed with this particular statewide emergency response.
Officer Torres, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I just concur with Mr. Grimes. One other thing that allows us a new system is when the, say that we, the county, we start answering the county's 911 lines, say they have to evacuate or they have a forest fire like they did several years ago where they had to evacuate the center, we'd be able to answer the 911 calls and with the expanded radio system, dispatch to their fire, sheriff's deputy units and police, so it gives us that capability.
Okay. At least it's a step in the right direction, but you're right. Okay, thank you very much. You don't want to vote on this separately. Okay, Mr. Barnwell?
I had a question. We, Madam Mayor, as you know, you and Mr. Horton and I are on a broadband Subcommittee of the Council, and I have talked about this with Mr. Grimes a little bit, and I wanted to say it out publicly and have you flesh it out for him if you would, Mr. Grimes. I understand that all of the city buildings are connected by a fiber, an underground fiber network. Would that fiber network be a standalone system so that in a, like really an ultimate disaster where all the other redundant systems weren't working, that that one would work? Or is that a way, a method of communication, at least internally, for the city to make connections between our various buildings and facilities?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Barnwell, not all of our city facilities are on the underground conduit system that we've been building for the last 12 years, but we very shortly will have approximately 20 facilities on that system. And then at that point, as we pull in fiber optic cables and tie all of these buildings in, then we are virtually an independent communication system, and all of our telephone conversations and all of our data is processed through that particular network. And we would not have any dependency on the central switch belonging to Verizon unless, of course, we wanted to go outside. But internal communication could actually happen on that conduit, and it would be an exclusive system to the city.
And to what degree does that tie into, if there is such a thing, a comparable system within the county framework?
The county, of course, have a completely different problem, because they are so widespread, and it's kind of not conceivable to see conduits running from, you know, Santa Barbara to Santa Maria. And I would believe that they would probably depend upon satellite communications rather than on actually having fiber optics running in the ground to all of their major areas.
Well, I, I mention it because I think Mr. Horton's kind of right on point, and if we had a major natural disaster, it may very well be that we aren't communicating with the outside world for several days, which would mean communicating internally would be important. So I would think that any way that we can expand our internal system to include our sister governmental organizations would be a good thing, for the school district, for example, at least the downtown administration building for the county. So I'm just saying it out loud so we can think about, because that's truly regional cooperation, and in a disaster, we, I think that'd be very important. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Falcone?
Thank you. I was wondering, back to Mr. Horton's point, we all have these networks that are, have frequencies that are unique to certain jurisdictions. There are some overlapping frequencies that have been set up. I'm wondering if there, anybody is thinking about a completely third type of frequency that doesn't get used, but that everybody has access to in the event of some disaster that's large enough for us all to understand that maybe the county system goes down, maybe our system goes down, that everybody tunes in to this third, this, this band that's never used unless it really is an opportunity for everybody to get on the same frequency, and that that is not used for regular communications. Everybody has their own frequencies for that. I'm wondering if there's any sort of thought on the regional kind of idea that Mr. Barnwell was talking about, since we all do have phones and cell towers and all of the various, and the radio frequencies and the waves. That is technology that exists as opposed to the Wi-Fi and the, and the underground conduits. So is there any thought of setting up some independent universe that would only be used, but that everybody could access? Because as, after 9/11, we, we had this conversation here in these chambers about this issue in particular. And so I'm just following up on, on those conversations. I'm glad to see this, that we, that we're getting these technologies, because I know the current system is not the best, and hopefully this will improve communications, but maybe you could talk to me a little bit about that.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Falcone, almost every agency that we deal with, including our own agencies, we have redundant systems. I mean, we, we need redundant systems and cannot do without it. All of the major agencies, including the state agencies that govern major events, they also have redundant systems. So that in the event that we lose a channel, we go on to another one immediately. The, the problem with communication on a channel is it can only handle so much communication. And you have to understand that each frequency can only handle the radios that are on that frequency. That's the only thing that can communicate to that frequency.
So there's a capacity limitation that we're dealing with, that I don't think people understand, and maybe I don't fully understand. But it seems to me that it is, it is that issue that needs to be explored. If it's capacity restriction, then we need to figure out how to either increase that capacity or make it so that more agencies can talk to each other simultaneously. And I don't know how we get there, if you're talking about actual limitations of physics, so.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Falcone, if you, many times you will pick up the phone and it says all circuits are busy, and that is simply because there's too many people trying to get onto that circuit at that particular time. I am, I am not aware of any discussions or any work by the major agencies on trying to have one compatible frequency, certainly if there was a group of frequencies that could be used for an emergency response. And again, frequencies and channels, you could have a lot of conversations with five or six channels, and maybe that is something that they are talking about. I have not heard that type of conversation. Usually, it's the ability of the controlling agency for the event, their ability to communicate virtually with the thousands of fire trucks that was handling the fire recently. And, and I think that's done through a regimented process, from the control to the individual fire department control, and then out to their own teams.
Okay. And we have item number 12, which is city advisory group recruitment.
Yeah, just briefly, I wanted just to highlight this on the consent calendar, if anyone's listening out there, that the annual, semi-annual advisory group recruitment period is just now starting, that you can go online at santabarbarca.gov and get the whole listing of all the vacancies and even apply online, that's a relatively new option. The applications are, will be accepted through Monday, November 6 at 5:00 PM. And the applicant, the, the interviews will occur on Tuesday, November 21 in the afternoon session, and Tuesday, December 5 during the evening session, starting at 6:00. So I know all of us are interested, there are a number of vacancies coming up, that we're all interested in having great qualified applicants, and if you have any questions about them, you can contact me, I'm sure anyone here on the council about any of those vacancies. But do check online to see what's available. to see what's available. And which, there might be some incumbents whose term's up who may or may not renew. So, you know, there might be more vacancies than what you first see on the list. So feel free to contact my office or anyone else if you're interested. Thank you.
Thanks for reminding us. Let's see, report from the Finance?
I'm moved.
Oh, we better do.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Report from the Finance Committee.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Finance Committee met at 1 o'clock today to review the matter of charges for outdoor seating in restaurants. We looked at three options, decided that we should retain the per-chair, but that we should look at a rate increase. And we've referred that back to staff, and they will bring it back to Finance and then back on to council later on.
Okay. Okay, good. Can I have a motion for adjournment? Or we're adjourned, unless there's anything?